You're live in five.
Mr. Chief Executive, I'd like to bring the Butte Silver Bow Council. I got unmute. Okay, we're gonna try that again. I apologize. Every week we run into just one little technical glitch. I will bring the Butte Silver Bow Council Commissioners Committee of the whole meeting to order on Wednesday, May 13th, 2020. Can we please have a roll call? Oh, sorry, we have to, would everyone please vote? Or please, roll call? I'm just waiting on one additional. Please make sure that you hit submit. We have 12 present and zero absent. Next item on tonight's agenda is public comment on any items that are on tonight's agenda. We do have the phone systems open and we will be going to those pretty, pretty soon. There is a little bit of a delay, so we will just have a little bit of about a 30 second delay for it to catch up. But we will go to the phone line right now. Thank you for calling the Butte Silver Bow Council Commissioners reading. Please state your name and address for the record.
Ryan Hardy, 1815 Parry.
Hello, Ryan, welcome.
Thanks.
Go ahead whenever you're ready.
So I was just calling in regards to Communication 2020-132.
Okay.
Uh, I'm strongly against putting that on the November ballot. I was informed the Commission has the power to conduct a study and review those findings regarding a switch in our local government. I'm not saying that it's necessarily a bad idea. I just think it should be looked at after a review is done. I don't think putting it to a vote tonight is a good idea and not letting the citizens have a discussion about it. Trying to overhaul the Commission or our local government during a pandemic will only cause more issues in already difficult times for Butte and Butte citizens. I believe a study would be more prudent and that a vote tonight would have one standing implications without doing its due diligence. I hope that I'm wrong, but the timing of this agenda item is the council meetings are virtual and the public cannot be there in person, I think is an issue. I have my own opinion regarding the whole thing, but nonetheless, I don't feel that today is the best day to vote on this, to put it on the November ballot.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
For the comments. We will give it a second and see if there's another one. As of right now, as of right now, there are no other callers, so we will move on to some written comments that we have received on items that are on tonight's agenda. The first comment that I have is from Bob Worley. Chairman Morgan, I know Commissioner Fisher has introduced a Communication 2020-132 that is being held in abeyance. I don't know when this will come out on the floor again for discussion. It has to do with the Council of Commissioners voting to put on the November general election, the issue to allow voters of Butte Silver Bow County the right to vote on selecting a city form of government versus our current form of electing a chief executive and reducing the current 12 commissioners to five. The issue has been around for a lot of years and people seem to be baffled by it. This first came up in the 1990s study commission and again in the 2000. It is a very common form of government and used in many larger and smaller communities in Montana with great success. Cities like Kalispell, Missoula, Great Falls, Bozeman, and Billings, just to name a few. These towns are enjoying population growth and business growth. This could be happening in Butte Silver Bow County if you would allow the voters an opportunity to change the form of government in Butte Silver, or in Butte Silver Bow County. I am not asking the Council of Commissioners to change the form of government in Butte Silver Bow, but only the opportunity for voters to vote on this issue. Please vote yes to put on the ballot in November. Thank you for your efforts and stay safe. The next communication is from Carol Murphy, 2418 Locust Street. I am writing in opposition to an unelected city manager and other changes proposed by this amendment. It is undemocratic and undermines the representations of citizens in our community. We need more transparency, not less, and we need great accountability, not less. I feel this amendment is seriously undermines the well-being of our community by replacing the elected office of the chief executive with a non-elected appointed position. Again, that one was from Carol Murphy. The next one is from Dinah McLeod, 905 Colorado Street. Please consider this email as my letter of opposition to change our form of government. I personally think there would not be any checks and balances and also the costs incurred would be way more in the end. Again, Dinah McLeod. The next one is from Travis McAdam, 61 Wathena Drive. Dear Commissioners, I am writing to express my opposition to the effort to restructure local government to reduce the number of commissioners and employ a city manager, BSB Item 2020-132. We currently have a great democratic-based system with a district approach. As a community member, I have incredible access to my commissioner because he essentially comes from my neighborhood. Because of that access, our current district-based model provides a type of direct representation that the proposed changes lack. As for employing a city manager, it sounds good in theory. However, I've seen in multiple communities around the state that the city manager position often up, usurps the power of the commission and mayor for the chief executive in our case over time. As a city manager takes over more of the day-to-day tasks, our elected officials become more figureheads and policymakers. Under our current system, if community members are unhappy with commissioners or the chief executive, there is a clear way to address it through voting people out of office. With a city manager, there is no direct democratic action to take. The position can easily become too powerful and insulated. I would much prefer to see our elected leaders continue making decisions. Thank you for your consideration and please vote against any efforts to change our current system. Sincerely, Travis McAdam. You guys can hear me okay? The next communication is from Carol Hines, 602 West Broadway Street. Dear Commissioners, please accept this letter as opposition to the Item 2020-132 presented by Commissioner Jim Fisher. I am still at a loss as to why this is even up for discussion. The next review directed by the Butte Silver Bow Charter states reviews will take place every 10 years, which puts this issue into the year of 2024. Why would we be going against our own charter rules to address a matter that is clearly opposed by a majority of voters and could be reviewed under current rules? Please move on to other more important matters and stop wasting taxpayer money and time with what is obviously one person's personal agenda. Again, thank you for your time and consideration, Carol Hines. The next one is from Jennifer Norman. I am writing about the proposed amendment put forward by Jim Fisher. I am asking the commissioners to vote no. This amendment will cost our county a lot of money and take power and representation away from the residents. We are currently being represented by 12 elected commissioners and an elected chief executive. If this amendment is passed, it means five full-time, fully-paid commissioners, no chief executive, who then will have the power to hire whomever they want as a city manager. In turn, that city manager will have no power and can be fired by the commissioners and replaced to get who they want in the position. Right now, our commissioners get a stipend each month and our chief executive is the only full-time salary. If the amendment is successful, we, the taxpayers, will be paying five more full-time salaries plus a much bigger salary for a city manager. This amendment takes away the checks and balances in our community and gives five people all the power. We need a balance of power, fair representation, and people in the chief executive position and commissioners who will work together to bring Butte to a better place economically, environmentally, and other. Now and into the future. We have that power with our elections. We won't with this amendment. Currently, other cities with this proposed structure are seeking city managers as they have not been able to fill the openings. Folks in Melrose, Buckston Divide, Rocker, Ramsey, and Walkerville would be underrepresented under the proposal. The current proposal, as it is written, diminishes the executive branch of government and eliminates the separations of power. In addition, it could consolidate commissioner representation to a few neighborhoods since the commissioners would be elected at large and diminish the geographical representation we currently have in Butte. In Flathead County, they have a county administrator along with three commissioners, similar to a proposal that BSB of Council of Commissioners is considering. In Kalispell, Health Director Hillary Hanson had to get on the council agenda to get the commissioners to declare an emergency before she could issue the same restaurant order. It took until March 19th for restaurants and bars to shut down in Kalispell. From the Daily Interlake Newspaper, quote, "The public health official leading the local response to the coronavirus pandemic will ask the Flathead County Commission to declare a state of emergency this week," end quote. As a city-county consolidated government, it appears that our form of government is better suited in situations like this. A strong chief executive is needed in a time of crisis. Flathead currently has two deaths and 37 cases of COVID-19. Through strong leadership, BSB has been able to keep its COVID-19 number to 11 and zero deaths. Sincerely, Jennifer Norman. The next one is from Terry Schultz, 2210 Elm Street. The latest proposal to reduce the number of commissioners to five and to elect them at large is a blatant attempt for a minority, a well-funded one at that, to control the county government. As now constituted commissioners from the Hill, Lower West Side and East Side, Middle Southwest, Southeast, and the area outside Butte's original city limits are representatives of those citizens in 12 areas and all get to debate government direction. Under the proposed changes, all five commissioners would come from one area of the county. As we have seen in our national elections, well-funded candidates have much more name recognition, literally buying their way into relevancy. Under the present system, five represents a minority view on council, while under the proposed plan, the same minority voting as a block gets to select the city manager, who is answerable to the reduced council taking away one of the checks and balances of the voters, who now select the chief executive and the veto power it wields. I would personally prefer a CEO elected from among the residents of the county and answerable to all the voters every four years instead of a professional selected by the council of five, selected from a nationwide search, who will leave for a better gig when one presents itself. The better job the professional does the sooner new opportunities arise. Bottom line, the people of Silver Bow County deserve to be represented by their neighbor who is familiar with the challenges of the district in which they live. Again, that was from Terry Schultz. The next communication is from Eldon Beal. Chief Executive Dave Palmer, Council of Commissioners, Chairman Morgan. The most frustrating part of trying to get my Communication 2020-157 acted upon expeditiously is because it was forgotten about in the committees, Public Works, Judiciary, et cetera, and poorly handled from the start. The unprofessional sarcastic and snide remarks by a few commissioners has also interfered and slowed the whole process. Not to mention the unwillingness of the Public Works Director and the Parks and Recreation Director to accommodate. Accept and follow the ordinance that has been on the books for years. Thank you, Eldon Beal. And that concludes all the comments that I've received on items on tonight's agenda. The next item on tonight's agenda is the report of the chair. The only thing I want to do is welcome everyone back to the Committee of the Whole. As you are aware, we decided to start the Committee of the Whole meetings again tonight, which we have done. We have decided to hold off on the committee meetings just because of the resources that would be required to hold those. If there is any items that come before us that a normal committee would be handling, we can handle that in the Committee of the Whole moving forward. I do want to thank all the commissioners as well as the public for offering their input and suggestions as we move forward during this pandemic. It's worked out pretty well so far, so again, thank you for everybody's willingness to work together and achieve good goals here. So that's all I have to report on that. The next, I would move into Section 1, which is bid openings, public hearings, and/or presentations. The first one is Communication Number 2020-192. Leslie Clark, Human Resources Director, requesting Council of Commissioners authorization for a presentation by Lori Farron of Payne West Insurance regarding the July 1st, 2020 Butte Silver Bow Health Insurance Renewal. I believe Ms. Clark is on here.
Yes, I am.
If she is, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chairman Morgan, Commissioners. First of all, I'd like to thank you for including us on your agenda this evening. I am happy to introduce Lori Farron. She is Butte Silver Bow's Benefit Consultant and she's a sales executive with Payne West Insurance in Helena. She's a licensed benefits consultant and holds licenses specific to the state of Montana in the areas of life, health, property, casualty, and disability insurance. Lori specializes in evaluation and strategic design and financial analysis of employee benefit programs. And I've worked with Lori for quite some time now and together Lori and Payne West bring a wealth of industry knowledge, industry contacts, and in-house services. The Payne West provides things such as benefit counseling, well-being counseling, legal, and actuarial services. She and Payne West bring all of that with her to support Butte Silver Bow in its health insurance benefits program. So I'd like to introduce Lori. And she has her presentation. Hi Lori.
Hi, thank you, everyone. Thank you for the time tonight on the agenda and the opportunity to talk about the benefits program and really an opportunity for you all to ask questions. Me and HR and the committee. So we do have a PowerPoint presentation today that I believe Jason's gonna put up for us. And, um... Do I share that, Jason, or am I missing it here?
One second. Jason, can you bring up the PowerPoint? Lori, I apologize for mispronouncing your name.
No, it's okay. No worries. The Farron name really does come from Butte. My father-in-law, long deceased, was raised in Butte, so... Feel like I'm part of the community.
Absolutely.
All right, so we're just gonna talk about the medical settlement vision renewal and the process that we went through, so we can go to the next slide, please. So this is the brief agenda and the points that I'm gonna try to hit tonight in this presentation. Feel free to stop me at any time. I realize that your, that your time is important on the, you know, in the evening and so I'll get through it, I think, as thoroughly and quickly as I can, but I want you to stop me at any time. So just so we'll talk a little bit about PWI. Leslie actually did a very good job of introducing us. We're gonna review the plan participants and the affiliates that benefit and are on this plan. I want to talk a little bit about self-funding and just allow, you know, some of us obviously know it very well and some of us do not, so I want to just highlight some self-funding features. I want to talk about the marketing process that we went through and the really intense RFP process we went through for this year's renewal. I'm gonna, I'd like to update the commission on the direct contract negotiations that we have entered into with St. James. And then I think that Leslie and Dinette will take over on budget explanation. So that's kind of the agenda that we'd like to get through tonight. Next slide, please. So I think it's important, as Leslie indicated, just that the commission understands what Payne West's role is in working with the Butte Silver Bow Insurance Committee and executive management to bring a program to the employees and their families at Butte Silver Bow. We are an independent consulting firm and that's really important and we work for you, okay? So even though I have access to Blue Cross and Blue Shield, Pacific Source, you know, Cigna, any kind of carrier or third-party administrator out there, and I have great relationships with them, I have no allegiance one way or the other and we really do operate based on a completely independent view. The other thing that's really important to note, and I think it's one of the reasons that the committee chose to hire me, is that we don't have any special interest programs within Payne West that we recommend to your group. The only way we make money is on a completely transparent contract, on a per member, or per employee per month. And, and, and so it really is just in your best interest to have that type of fiduciary setup, especially for a public entity. So we are lucky in that even though we live in the great state of Montana, we have national resources. We're part of an Assurex firm. I also am the only Montana producer within a very large organization called Help Go Better. I have access to national expertise just from a variety of other firms that we actually compete against and we have good working relationships with. And we have really good resources with regard to the business that we provide and the services that we provide. So primarily, the work that I do is, we do the analysis. We work a lot with the insurance committee to really keep an eye on the plan, look at what monthly claims are doing. We look at auditing those claims. We look at bringing new programs to a group that will over time assist them with cost containment and really use data and analytics for our future planning for the benefits. So that's kind of the role that I bring to the city and county of Butte Silver Bow. Any questions on that?
Do any of the commissioners have any questions on that? Okay, I do not see any, so continue on.
Great, okay, so let's go to the next slide, please. So with regard to who benefits from the plan design, the current enrollment in the Butte Silver Bow Employee Welfare Plan, we have 290 employees. We have, and those are direct employees of Butte Silver Bow, we have nine affiliate members, we have 11 retiree, and that's Medicare eligible and early retiree, both. And then I think a year ago, we made some changes for retirees who might want to go off on Medicare, but they still wanted to have the dental vision. That was one of the benefit changes we made, and we have nine enrollees in just the dental vision only, so we have a total of 319 today, as far as that snapshot. So the affiliates that are allowed to come on to the Butte Silver Bow Plan, based on your guidelines, are the Airport Authority, the Chamber of Commerce, Main Street, Uptown Butte, Murdy, and then Port of Montana, and you can see what the participants are that we have in the plan, in those affiliates' membership. Next slide. So I think sometimes when we think of self-funding, it can be a really nebulous type of concept, but I think this picture really tells the story of there's two ways to provide insurance to any group, you know, for health, medical, dental vision, disability, all of that. You can pay a premium to a fully insured insurance company, and they assume all of your risk, and in turn pay the claim. Or we can look at a self-funded plan where we break those components apart, so the components within the plan include fixed administrative costs. We do pay stop-loss premiums, some insurance premiums, because you're too small to stand on your own from a credibility perspective for large claims, so we do pay a stop-loss premium. We actually pay the claims then within that, and the value, I think, is that in the years that we have good years, if we are, if our budget, if our expenses are less than our budget, we get to keep that potential savings within the plan for future plan years. When you're fully insured, you don't ever get that money back, you could have a great plan year, you could have paid significant amounts of money and not had those claims come in, and then the insurance company wins. So on the self-funded plan, we want the members and the county to win when they have good plan years. So that's kind of the difference between the two plan designs and how we purchase insurance. Next slide, please. So I told you that we have stop-loss insurance. There's two parts of stop-loss insurance. We first have the Pacific Insurance, so that feature is meant to protect each participant to a certain level of coverage. And, and so what that means is, like for Butte Silver Bow, we have that set at $140,000. So that means that Butte Silver Bow pays the claims for any given member up to $140,000. Once that person has had claims over $140,000, the stop-loss, the Pacific stop-loss kicks in, and the insurance pays the rest of those, those costs. The second level is aggregate stop-loss, and I like to call this sleep tight at night, or sometimes you hear it referred to as umbrella insurance, and that protects the group as a whole. And so what's really important about that is, we typically, in a group of your size, will see two to maybe three people, four people hitting that Pacific stop-loss in any given plan year. But what if we had 25 or 30? That would blow the budget right out of the water, and that's what this aggregate stop-loss insurance protects, is but the entire group. So we actually did have a increase, a pretty good significant increase this year in Pacific claims, and the aggregate insurance did end up, you know, kicking in, and we got some stop-loss money back, which we'll talk about later, but so there's two levels of insurance. Okay? Questions on that?
I would say just continue on, and then at the end of the presentation, if that's okay, we'll, we'll take questions at that.
All right, perfect. Next slide. So just some key points. When we're self-funded, the employer assumes all or a portion of the risk, which is what Butte Silver Bow is doing. We hire a third-party administrator, in this case it's Allegiance, to pay our claims and to follow the summary plan document and make sure that we're staying in compliance. The thing that I like about self-funded opportunities is that we can change the plan design to meet the needs of the group, and we've got more flexibility than if we were to just buy an off-the-shelf product. Again, any savings with regard to premium dollars not being spent on claims is retained by the members, the group. And what we do in a self-funded plan is we set the budget at what we think the expected costs will be. That is no different than what a fully insured company would do. We do have, we assume a little bit of risk, in that if our expected costs go a little bit higher, we do have to take care of those, but very often, our goal is to be, have the plan be at expected costs. The way that we determine those is using past claim history, the known risks within the group. We have standardized actuarial formulas, and then we have an actuary put a stamp of approval on our budget. So it's a science, that's the science part with regard to self-funding. Next slide. So with regard, I just kind of want to mention the stop-loss for Butte Silver Bow over the last year, this is a snapshot, so we looked at a picture of July 1st, 2019 through June 30, we paid $402,155 in premiums. The stop-loss reimbursement back to the group were $704,55. So to date, the carrier has actually reimbursed us almost $300,000, and that's more than what you paid in premium to the stop-loss. So definitely this year, the stop-loss carriers did not win. Next slide. Another area that we have focused a significant amount of time on is prescription drug cost control, and some of you may remember, a couple of years ago, we did a full pharmacy benefit analysis and made the decision to move from Cigna to Navitas. When we did that, some key features were put into your plan design. The first one was that we put in a zero-dollar copay for generic preventive medications on the high-deductible healthcare plan, and we did that because we don't want any barriers for people taking prescriptions for things like high blood pressure, or high cholesterol, or diabetes, or depression, and so we changed the plan to reflect that. The other piece, though, that was really significant for Butte Silver Bow is, within those contracts, we changed and were able to negotiate that any type of pharmacy rebate that comes back from the manufacturers doesn't get kept by the third-party administrator, it doesn't get kept by the consultant. 100% of those rebates go to Butte Silver Bow. Really key contract feature change. The other thing is that the contract that we have is 100% pass-through and transparent, and what that means is that we have the, we have the opportunity to have all of those claims audited. We, we know exactly that the charges that are being submitted against the plan from pharmacies for prescription drugs, there's no spread pricing, there's no clawback, all of the things that you may have heard about in the last legislature that went on, your contract is sound and solid, and it completely benefits you. The amount of money that this change was able to provide and come back into your plan for Butte Silver Bow in 2019 was $172,613 that you wouldn't have gotten back on your last contract. Okay, next slide. So again, just to recap, self-funding advantages, cash flow is really helps, the employer holds the reserves, and we can put them back into the plan when we need to, either with high claims costs or better benefits. Another key advantage that people don't realize is that there is no margin in this. The insurance companies that you have a self-funded, or a fully insured plan, they always have a little bit of margin in their calculations for claim fluctuations. You know, they're taking the full risk, and then they're mitigating that risk by putting some margin in. And the other piece is in a self-funded plan, you actually see tax savings, there are no premium taxes charged for self-funded claims, that's an average of 2% savings over your entire claim cost. So some really good reasons to be self-funded. Next slide. So what we did this year is we actually went out to a full RFP process for the administration, for the third-party administration. The stop-loss we do every year, but we also looked at a PBM comparison, just to confirm that we indeed, two years ago, made the right decision on the contract, and it was still the best decision to go into this 2020 plan renewal. We approached third-party administrator, administration services or proposals from Blue Cross Blue Shield, we looked at the Montana National Insurance Authority, MMIA, Pacific Source Health Plans, Allegiance, which is your incumbent carrier, and within Allegiance, we looked at, we received proposals from nine stop-loss carriers, and then we also looked at captive options through Berkeley and Everlong. So we really tapped the net wide to make sure that we were doing due diligence and, and one, giving everyone an opportunity to provide the proposals and then just to do the analytics. Within that process, we ended up receiving declines to provide proposals from MMIA. The primary reason for that was because of COVID-19 timing, MMIA was revisiting their overall plan increase, and they weren't, they weren't really sure that they had time, quite frankly, to work on new groups, and then they did tell us that they're always willing to look at a one-one effective date. I would be high, highly, it'd be highly unlikely that we would go through that process, but it's just important that you understand the transparency there. Pacific Source declined to provide proposals, the Berkeley captive declined to provide a proposal, and three stop-loss carriers declined to provide proposals. Next slide, please. So obviously, when we do the request for proposals, we look at the strength of the plan incumbent, you know, how are they doing for us? We didn't really have any complaints with regard to Allegiance, and we have a grid system that we do the analysis with, so Allegiance provided no increase this year in administration fees, which is good, they have the lowest administration fees out there. The other piece of it is, there's no member disruption to move or no plan design changes, even though we, we looked at a bunch of them, it didn't make sense, and so your members are used to Allegiance, they trust Allegiance, they have, you know, a comfort level with Allegiance, so that those were helpful things to consider. The other side is that when we did the RFP, we've got some programs that are integrated currently with Allegiance and with claims. The HealthJoy, uh, Concierge Medicine is currently integrated with the Allegiance website, so when your members call, they have really good information because they access directly into the Allegiance site. Our online enrollment that we rolled out last year is completely integrated with Allegiance, it works very slick, and it caused a great level of administrative ease for HR department. I think the members kind of liked it, and it also helps us with APA reporting and some other projects that we're going to be rolling out in the future. And, and then, of course, Allegiance, we have some good cost containment measures both through HealthCheck 360 and the wellbeing program that we rolled out. So there were just some really key things that, that we thought Allegiance still came to the top, even though we went out to all of those other carriers. Next slide, please. So I'd like to tell the Commission a little bit about what we're doing with regard to working with, say, James Hospital in a partnership. So we all know that hospital charges are the biggest charge or biggest cost within any type of plan, and then followed by, you know, prescription drugs. But the tough thing is that, you know, while we have network and participating provider agreements in place, I am of the opinion that we can go further than that, and that we really need to work with our local providers to form that relationship and really try to hone in on the cost. So what we've done with them is we have a contract that charges the percentage of Medicare, that's sort of the base that we, that we try to get to within health plans, and because it's a standardized way of predicting costs, and if we have Medicare. So we put, we negotiated the percentage of Medicare rate with Butte Silver Bow to a lower percentage, and that action provided us with $900,000 savings to Butte Silver Bow over the last 12 months, just by negotiating those contracts. And, and so that, we're going to continue down that path and continue to work on that. What we did this year is, we also looked at prescription drug pricing negotiations. JCOs are prescription drugs that are very high-cost, and they are administered within a hospital setting, so it's going to be things like chemotherapy and some other hospital setting prescriptions. We renegotiated JCO's pricing, and that pricing, we can only at this point do a retrospective review, but based on current claims, would have, will equate to an additional $200,000 savings to the Butte Silver Bow Plan, right off the top. So in one year, we negotiated contracts that would save us over a million bucks, and we're just going to keep working on that. So that's the kind of work that I like to do, and that I think is really meaningful over time. Next slide. So again, we talked about renewal recommendations to the Committee, that Allegiance, after all of the RFP, remains as the third-party administrator. Tokio Marine is the stop-loss provider. We are recommending that we are renewing with Tokio Marine as well, and that Navitas will remain as the pharmacy benefit manager. The funding for the plan was recommended to be at expected cost, again, done with our actuary and internal compliance people at Payne West. That would, is the recommendation that went to the Insurance Committee from, please. Next slide, please. So I think it's really, you know, I've given you a little bit of a snapshot on the types of work that we do day in and day out with regard to the plan design and the types of cost containment strategies that we're trying to put into place, and just in general, the culture that we're trying to build for the benefit program, for the employees and their families at Butte Silver Bow. And so these are all the things that your Committee has chosen to do in the last couple of years. couple of years. Obviously, they hired PNB, we're grateful for that, thank you for that partnership. We did make a significant change by adding a high deductible health insurance plan and a health savings account for people to choose from. Choice is always nice. And I really like the health savings account tool and just the fact that that gives people, that plan design gives people an opportunity to open those health savings accounts and carry their savings year after year, which is, is really how we should be thinking about, you know, planning for healthcare. We chose Navitas as the PBM, which we're, we are now can say that was a really good choice based on the data. Stop-loss, the insurance stop-loss coverage has changed significantly this year. We are not going to have any aggregating specific costs and no lasers moving forward. And lasers are just really easily explained as a higher deductible than what the regular specific deductible is for high-risk members. Gosh, we've worked really hard with Cigna and their transference agreement and really tightened those up. We've worked really hard with SBL with regard to the pricing. I think one of the nice, really exciting things was the well-being program and how well that's doing. And it continues to, to just grow and people, I think, are receiving it. We implemented Employee Navigator, as we talked about. We did make some changes to retiree health insurance and I did, I've done a lot of education to retirees individually with regard to their opportunities outside of the Silver Bow plan and really help them control their costs and feel comfortable, I think, moving to Medicare. We implemented HealthJoy telemedicine, it's a concierge and referral service, claims assistance, bill review. So we, I feel like we are doing the right thing with regard to an overall strategy that really is like a three to five to 10-year strategy that we tweak over time. So I'm actually, I think the committee's done some really great work in adopting these programs. I know that Leslie has given you guys a little bit more in-depth summary of those things, which if she wants to comment on or you guys can read or if you have questions on that. Leslie, did you want to comment on anything else?
No, I think you covered it well, Lori. And then the handout there, you know, is just a supplement to what she has spoken to. And we're proud of our committee for the last few years and the things that we've been able to accomplish, so thanks, Lori.
You're welcome. So we can go to the next slide and I think Danette now is going to take over and just talk a little bit about budget. And I think this is a thing that I would just comment on, if you can go to the next slide, please. So we had, the plan had a really rough year with regard to some really, as I said, we see on average two to three large claimers a year. This year, we had seven or eight and they were really high.
Danette, can we get you to mute? Okay, sorry about that, Lori. Go ahead.
That's okay. And so you will have, you know, if you look at a plan over a five-year timeframe or span, you're going to have, you're going to have one bad year at least. And, and we had a very significant claims year last year. We're still getting stop-loss reimbursements in. We are still, you know, getting pharmacy rebates in, but we had a lot of large claimants. And that's what insurance is for. We know that we've got some risks moving forward that are going to continue to cost the plan dollars. And, and so while I hate to see this type of increase in a plan, and I know you all do too, this is, it's kind of a, it's a tough spot right now. I would anticipate though, that while we do have some, some claimants that we know are going to cost us some money next year, we also have hope and, and good data that says we're probably not going to end up where we were this year. So we're, we're always trying to just make sure we can cover those costs and, and pay the bills. So I know that Danette and Jav and Leslie worked very hard on the budget and, and so I will let Danette maybe now kick in here and talk just a little bit about what the strategy is and, and at least explain this piece of it. And then, Danette, I am happy to talk a little bit more about some more aggressive approaches that I think we can take within the plan to really mitigate these costs, you know, looking at reference-based pricing, looking at some other things, looking at the concierge medicine a little closer. But do you want to, do you want to comment on, on this slide?
Sure, Lori. And Jason, can you pop it back to the previous slide just for one second? So in the analysis right here, like Lori had mentioned earlier in the presentation, when you're a self-funded health insurance plan and on your own, you're required to have actuary calculations when you're going out for insurance renewal. And the actuary and with Lori's recommendation, we were to go to expected claims of 7.1 million. So the change in the plan from FY '20 to FY '21 is the 1.19 million dollars or the 20.3% increase. So very significant, as Lori had mentioned, she spoke about the high claims that we saw this past year. Going into this year, a lot of the plan changes that have been done over the past couple of years helped us build the reserve fund. So going into the year, we were at about a 1.1 million dollar reserve fund balance. Coming out of the year, projected to be probably four or 500,000 dollars, just depending upon what our claim usage is and then depending upon our stop-loss reimbursement. So that's not a conservative number, I'd have to say. If I was being my more conservative self, I think it's probably going to be more like 200 or 300,000 dollars. So you can see, we had a really, really rough year. And as Lori explained, in self-funded health insurance plans, you have good years and you have bad years. And unfortunately, we didn't have sufficient reserves. Probably 1.1 million is not our target reserve number, we know that, we know we need to go a little bit more. So over the years, we've been trying to build that back up. And this year, having a bad year just really ate into that number. So next slide, Jason? So the projected increase falls out. We still offer traditional plan, then we also offer a high deductible plan, and then we have the various buckets or types of coverage. So employee only, employee plus one, and then the employee plus family. Again, all at the 20.3% increase. And then you can see at the bottom of that slide that we're trying to make sure that we increase our number, our coverage by the 1.198 million dollars. Next slide. There's a lot of information on here, so if you have questions after we're done, we can kind of walk through these slides. The budget proposal or the funding proposal shows that we're looking again to, so we're going in the budget process, to offer the $30 per month per employee. A lot of union contracts have already been settled out and that's in those contracts today. And so the non-union people were looking at offering that as well. I think what's important here and what Lori will touch base on as well, make some comments too, is that our plan is actually what we consider in a rehab position. We're not, we're not funding our reserves at the right level. So we have to focus on rehabbing the plan and then throughout this next year, making some type of significant changes in order to maintain this self-funding status and then provide the good quality health insurance that is provided today to all employees. It may require us changing a lot of structure here. It could possibly be that we go to two different types of a high deductible plan, one that meets more the family and then one that could be more for a single individual, more of a catastrophic type plan. We're not too sure what it's going to look like, but we're going to have to try and look at all avenues. In this process, in this renewal year, Leslie, myself, Lori, several others on the insurance committee, as well as Teresa in the HR department, all sat down and really looked at if we could all go to a high deductible plan this year. And it just didn't work out for the employees. It didn't work out as a whole. We see some classes of groups of employees getting 26 and 27% increases and others 17. So to kind of flatten it out, we're looking at trying to do it some funding right now and looking at doing the $30 per month and then rehabbing at $150 per month per employee. It's a significant give, an amount of money to be putting into the budget this year. However, it's just, there's no way out there. It's just a large, large increase. So my recommendation to the chief executive in the budget process and then to the council will look something like what's in front of you tonight. When we're looking at these contributions, the increase by Silver Bow will be borne on the traditional, anywhere from 53 to 62% of the increase and with the employee share 47 or 38 to 47%. And then on the high deductible portion, the Silver Bow will be looking at contributing 66% of the increase with a low of 57% and then from 34 to 43% on the employee side. So there's a lot of give and take going on here. It's a year that we really have to look at these type of contributions and really rehabbing the plan. When you also have a self-funded health insurance plan, you have to, as a local government, look at these type of years and know that rehab could be on the plate. In my tenure and even before, when I was here with Silver Bow, we had some tough years and had to do something similar, but not to this extent of a rehab. Next slide. Just wanted to walk into any questions that you might have. Just also wanted to share really quickly that I think as Silver Bow employees, we're very, very fortunate for the funding that we receive and the contributions that we receive by the local government. On the high deductible plan, on a single side, the health insurance costs about $19,360. On the family, it's about $22,605. On the traditional plan, it's pretty close to $20,817 and just under $25,000 on the traditional plan for a family. So significant costs and a large, significant, major portion of the benefits that are offered here at Silver Bow.
Thank you, Danette, for that, that presentation. At this time, I would ask if any of the commissioners have any questions. I do have one that I would like to, to touch base on is really the affiliates that are added to the, to the insurance. I noticed Murdy is on there. Can you explain, Danette, why we have those affiliates? And, and the other question, the other side of that is, do we, do we know what they're costing us? Do we, should we look at having them go on their own? They as the affiliates as a whole, but what, what do you, what do you think there?
So as far as affiliates go, if they have, on a self-funded plan by a local government, the law was passed, oh boy, late 90s probably, that if you have an economic development entity in your community providing economic development services and the local government has a self-funded health plan, then you can consider letting them participate on your health and plan. So you may, it's not that you have to, but you may allow the participation. So all of these affiliates, with the exception of maybe the Chamber of Commerce, is on the Silver Bow Health Insurance Plan in some type of fashion, whether it was one or two employees from each one, since the late 90s at least. And so as far as I, my understanding, we, as this insurance committee, we really don't know the details of every employee and what type of claims they have or whatnot. But, you know, affiliates, the only thing I can say about affiliates is that we don't necessarily get to encourage the wellness piece and whatnot that we have. But as far as what the knowledge that I am available to access, when you're talking about Murdy, I think we have one, I just missed that. We still have one on the plan and I, yeah, I'm not too sure about cost of claims or anything like that. We don't have, we don't have access to that, nor would I want to.
Sure, yeah, I completely understand that for sure. So, thank you. Any other questions? I think I seen Commissioner Fisher had some questions. You have to unmute Mr. Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Fisher, can you unmute? Jim, I was going to say, it looks like you're connected twice. I don't know if you have two microphones on that might be causing feedback. Can you try now, Commissioner Fisher? Looking at our IT staff to look at how we can resolve this.
John, I wonder if he could call in on the phone?
One, one second, Mr. Chief Executive. Commissioner Fisher, we're going to have you be removed from the meeting and then just brought right back in and see if we can square that up. We'll just wait for Commissioner Fisher to rejoin us in a second.
I'm going to have a question also.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sorch. I just want to wait till Commissioner Fisher gets back online before we proceed.
Gosh, if you want to lead us in a sing-along, now would be the time.
Commissioner Fisher, it looks like you're back online.
I'm not gone.
And you sound, you sound great.
Okay, thank you. Great presentation. My question goes back to the aggregated stop-loss. Now, on the stop-loss, it was 140,000 per person. Then when you went to the aggregated stop-loss, it was more than a few people. Is that still, when you have more than a few people, is that 140,000 per person? few people, is that 140,000 per person?
Ms. Farren, you have to unmute. Okay, try that, Ms. Farren.
Okay, um, so what the aggregating spec does, we, we have it at, we, everybody's up to 140,000, but we also have a cap. So there's a, a dollar figure, um, you know, like the, a, a, a large dollar figure that is umbrella over the top of it. And, um, it's somewhere in the range without me looking at it, it's at, uh, like 6,700,000. And then we also have the budget for your medical or your dental vision in there, which is why that brings it to, um, that 7.1 million. So, um, again, we rarely have, you know, more than three or four hit. But gosh, what if we had, you know, 50 hit up to 139,000? That would blow the plan up. So at some point, we've got a cap that just says we stop here. Does that help?
Commissioner Fisher?
Uh, yes, thank you. I was just, I remember something being said in there about, um, three or four people, and then there was a comment in there of like, if we got up to 25 people. So I guess my question was, if we had 140,000 per person and on the aggregated stop-loss and you get, you know, four people at 200,000, you know, you're approaching a million dollars there. So that does answer my question. Thank you.
Commissioners...
There's a total dollar cap.
Okay. Ms. Gleason, you are on mute.
I thought Jason was controlling me. Anyway, just to add a couple, um, comments, because I think what Commissioner Fisher was discussing was, um, how many, um, large claims that we had hitting the stop-loss. And what Lori had mentioned is last year, we also had some lasers, which are a different, um, another layer stop-loss that we had, that we had to have last year in order to get carriers to cover us. And lasers are, they get to pick one person in your plan. I can't remember what our laser number was last year, 250 or 300?
50.
Three, I think she's saying 300. And so, um, on that particular one person, nothing got paid and let, that we had a full coverage all the way to 300 on that one person. So what we've been able to do this year, what we worked really hard to do, was remove those lasers off the plan, um, so we don't have any of those lasers out there and that we do just have the $140,000, um, for per individual. I think that's more what Commissioner Fisher might have been asking. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Sorets, you had a question?
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. Uh, thank you for the, uh, the presentation. It's never easy to give us such wonderful news. And it's not, I know you're really going over it hard and trying to do the best you can. Um, I guess my question is, I'm back on, back on slide seven or so, you talked about, um, self-funding and expected costs in the formula. Um, you know, you're kind of forecasting, you know, to try to keep what the cost is. Is the COVID-19 going to be an expected cost? Is there any costs there that have been rolled into that fund for next year or 2022?
Ms. Farren.
Uh, yeah, so the answer is COVID-19 is one of the factors, the many factors that we have to plug in. And we don't really know yet. So that was the best guess. Um, but it, it, we, we put, uh, like, I think a 1.2 factor in there in order to, you know, uh, estimate. Um, what's really gonna make it a, a big difference is you have hospitals right now that are defending all of their, uh, what we would call elective procedures. So knees and hips and, um, back and, um, you know, maybe even some mammograms and, uh, you know, things like that. Um, and so we, it's hard to tell how many of those will actually get scheduled, when they'll get scheduled, um, where they'll get scheduled. Uh, so we did put some calculation in, but it is, it is anyone's best guess, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Someone will see some, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Neil.
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hey, thank you, Chairman Morgan. Thanks, Lori, and thanks, Danette, for you guys. Um, question, if, if we, if this plan goes through now, i- is it locked in from now until 2021? Would be my first question.
Ms. Gleason and, or Lori, whoever wants that.
Uh, yeah, we, we definitely have a, a, a contract. We, we, we would have a contract secured through the renewal through 2021.
So, okay, so again, as I, just repeating myself, I apologize, Chairman Morgan, the follow-up of that is, so no increases on that would go up? It would be premium go up now as it is, but moving forward, it would stay the same at least until 21?
Yep, yep. And, and again, watch it every month. Um, you know, see where we are in terms of reserves, um, and, um, dig in and, and talk about maybe some other strategies for controlling those hospital costs. That's where it's at.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, does anyone else have, have any other questions? Just raise your hand and I'll call on you. Okay, I don't see any other questions that people are, are asking for. Um, Danette, if I can, can you tell me the process to move forward or what, what your plans are there?
Sure. So, um, moving forward, um, we will be presenting a very similar plan to what I showed you in the budget. Um, I guess it's really important to point out to you that that rehab right now is, is just kind of a one-time rehab approach. Um, hopefully we'll be able to mitigate those numbers next year with some changes and some, using some different philosophies. Um, I have, we've had a lot of conversations with the chief executive about this and he's, um, kind of challenged us greatly to come up with some new ideas and to be looking at all methods, actually starting tomorrow, not waiting any longer. And those could be including reaching out to NMI immediately and saying, what would it look like if we became, um, a pool plan participant and how could we be a, a participant in the plan, um, potentially? That might not be our best option, but at look, at least be, looking at all those avenues. We did those, we did try that. Um, but we just can't wait any longer. We've got to try to do, um, some changes here going forward. Um, I talked a little bit about the potential of going to, um, a couple of different high deductible plans. Um, we, I mentioned that we kind of looked, we did look at that. We looked at it very seriously, but it just didn't make sense this year. And then, um, listening to Payne West, a lot of their, to Lori and, um, her team members, um, it, it's really tough. It's, it's a big change for employees. And so if we're gonna go that route, we've got to do a lot of, lots of education with our employees on how those work and what that looks like for employees. Um, they're, you know, once you learn how to use them, they're really great, but you have to know how to, um, fund the plan for yourself and, and make it work for your family. Um, so we'll be looking at those type of options as well as what Lori said, just to our current plan structure, working with the hospitals, um, working with other facilities, uh, doing what we can to do some cost containment on our plan. And then a huge education piece to employees. I think the biggest part, and and we sell this every year and in open enrollment, um, Leslie and Lori talk in great lengths about this, but I can't say enough that once Bute Silver Bowl contributes the funds to a self-funded health insurance plan, those funds become the employees or the members of the health insurance fund. And so you got to be wise consumers. It's just, there's no option right now in, just across the whole country and not just as a result of COVID. Healthcare's just increased significantly. The costs have increased and we have to be wise consumers. And if we're good consumers on, on our end and we can try to use the plan to our best benefits, um, then that helps in the long run. There used to be years, um, when we had sufficient reserves that some of the interest earnings that we were able to get off the reserve funds were pretty close to covering the amount of the increase, um, offsetting the increase. And those years of, have gone by. Um, it's tough in the interest rate that we're in, as well as the, um, not being able to build reserves because of high costs. But, you know, once that money's in the pool, it's the employees. And we really have to drive that education piece.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, looks like Chief Executive Palmer has something to say. I just have to have you unmute. There you go, sir.
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. I just want to take this time, you know, there's a lot of time and effort that goes into this procedure to get as far as we have gotten. I want to thank Danette and her team, uh, Leslie and her team, and Lori and her team. For all the hours, there's a lot of hours that went into this to get us this far. It's not great news because of the huge increase, but as Danette said, it's, we have times with, um, healthcare costs and we had some huge claims and it's up to the individuals to shop around and do the best they can to save money for the whole program. I just wanted to say thank you to everyone that worked on it.
Okay. Thank you, Lori, for the presentation and, Danette, for the information. Um, thanks again for attending tonight. At this time, I'm gonna move on to section two.
Chairman Morgan?
Uh, Commissioner Fisher, yes?
If I could, please, one more question.
You bet.
Thank you. Um, refresh my memory, um, I know our calendar year and our budget year are different. I mean, I know the budget runs from July 1 through July and our calendar year runs different than our insurance. When would the 20% increase take place?
So, Commissioner Fisher, um, the increase takes place, the plan is funded on a, on our fiscal year, so July 1. The deductible year is the calendar year that you're referencing, which is, um, different than what our, um, funding year is with the increase starting on July 1.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this increase would take place in July of 2020?
Yep, July 1st.
Yeah, and our deductible would still be good until January of 2021?
So, yep, January 1, mhm.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh huh.
Is that all the questions, Commissioner Fisher?
Yes, it is. Thank you, Chairman Morgan.
Okay, thank you. Anything else before I move on? All right, well, thank you. I'll move on to section two, which is communications. The first one is communication number 2020-157. Eldon Beal, 315 South Dakota Street, requesting Council of Commissioners to withdraw my communication, number 19-443, and any follow-up communication, 2020-90, from the suspense file that was placed on March 25, 2020. I am going to get, uh, Mr. Beal on the, on the telephone here in a minute. Um, I do want to clarify that I, the caption that we have on the agenda was, was incorrect as, as, uh, as written. And so I would like to just amend that caption for any future reference so that it reads, Eldon Beal, resident, um, requesting Council of Commission, or Council of Commissioners poll communication 19-443 and communication 2020-90 out of the suspense file to be placed on the next Public Works Committee agenda. So I will be making that adjustment on the caption. But at this time, I'm just gonna go to the phone lines and give, uh, or let Mr. Beal, um, on this
Hello?
Hello, Eldon. This is John Morgan with the Council of Commissioners in Bute. Uh, just wanted to give you the opportunity to attend, um, the meeting tonight. We, we are on your communication and I don't know if you have anything to add or not before we start discussion, but I wanted to give you that opportunity.
Sure. Um, what I'm, what I'm asking is that my communication, 2020-157, be removed from the suspense file by a motion or whatever the proper protocol and to be put back into the, to the proper meetings and to be acted upon in a timely manner.
Okay, thank you. So, I'm just talking into multiple microphones, just so the commission is aware. So these two communications were placed in the suspense file to be looked at at a, at a later time. Um, as all the commissioners know, we, we currently are not having committee meetings, but if the, um, commissioners do want it pulled from the suspense file and added to the committee of the whole meeting, that is an option. And so, um, at this time, I would just ask for any comments from the commissioners or questions, if they have any.
Okay.
So, uh, commissioners, do you have any suggestions or input? Okay, Commissioner Olson, it looks like you have a question?
Commissioner Morgan, if you could, uh, bring your microphone over, that would help.
Currently, I'm holding my laptop and talking into two microphones, so please bear with me. Commissioner Olson, did you have a question? Nope, okay. Um, how would the council like to proceed with this? Commissioner O'Neil, looks like you have...
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. Um, I was not on this committee when this came through. As I recall, this, this was acted upon, that, that I, that I was aware of. So I'm, yes, I, please help me, other commissioners who were involved in this one. Correct me if I'm wrong. I, I thought there was, um, discussion on this and I, I thought it was act upon, but maybe it was another one of, um, of his, he put in, but again, seeking help, thank
Commissioner Olson, do you have any input on that as far as Public Works Committee goes?
Uh, thank you, uh, Chairman Morgan. Um, yes, we, we discussed it in the Public Works and, uh, the options that we were discussing was to either deny it, um, or take it up at a later time when we had, um, the appropriate funds to put up stop signs and whatever. And that's why we put in the suspense, suspense fund, or suspense, um, file. Um, I'll leave it up to other folks to, uh, chime in and say, I think those are the two options. Uh, I don't know that we want to take action on it at this point. Uh, anybody else on the, on the Public Works Committee, want to chime in on that?
Commissioner McDonough.
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. Can you hear me?
Uh, yes.
Okay, yeah, we did discuss it in the committee and the options were either to deny, as Commissioner Olson stated, or spend $3,200 at the time, which, um, Public Works Director Neri stated that, um, wasn't his recommendation to do that. Um, so we did, we did review it for a couple of months. I believe it was on the agenda. We finally just made a motion to put it in the suspense file, but at this time, I'd like to make a motion, did we refer to the Parks and Rec, uh, Department for report back to the council?
Okay, there is a motion made and seconded. Uh, can I, can you please restate who seconded that? Uh, Commissioner, Commissioner Olson. Um, one question that I do have, Commissioner McDonough, is the, the Parks Department or the Parks Committee, are they currently
Uh, I don't, I don't, I don't believe so at the moment, but just like any other board, you know, I mean, I think we're just starting to get back to meetings, uh, whether it's in person, but it's just like a committee meeting, you know? Um, we would still have to wait for them to meet to, to give us a report back.
Sure, okay. This is such a great view of me. Um, at this time, uh, it looks like I have a motion made and seconded to refer it to the Parks Committee. Is there anything on the question? Uh, Commissioner Fredrickson, it looks like you have a comment?
I just wanted, the Parks Board, I'm on the Parks Board and we haven't met for a few months now and I haven't had any, we haven't had any discussion or communication from Director Gallagher that we're going to be meeting soon, so yeah, I just wanted to throw that in there.
County Attorney Joyce?
Thank you Chairman Morgan. I just wanted to clarify whether or not you were asking that this, those two communications that are currently in the suspense file be pulled out of the suspense file and then referred to the Park and Rec Board? Because if you're just acting on this communication to refer to Park and Rec Board, it doesn't act on those two that are in the suspense file.
Thank you County Attorney Joyce, that does clarify. So our action tonight would be to make a motion to pull these communications out of the suspense file and add them to the committee of the whole agenda, and then at that time we can take further action on those two individual communications moving forward. Is that correct?
Right, or just pull them out of the suspense file and refer them to the Park and Recreation Board?
Yeah, at a later time, right?
Yeah, I guess either way, I mean, his communication says to pull them out and act on them, so if your motion is to pull them out, you can then refer them to the Park and Rec Board, you probably could do that.
Okay, okay. So do we have a substitute motion Commissioner McDonough?
Thank you Chairman Morgan. Correct me if I'm wrong, but did we not make a motion a couple of weeks ago or three weeks ago to move them out of the suspense file?
No, we did not, because we did not have a, we referred them to, referred this communication to committee of the whole because we weren't having the other committee meeting, so I can definitely add them to the next committee of the whole meeting. Or the other option is to deny this communication and leave it in the suspense file until it comes out normally, so. Do I have a substitute motion? Commissioner O'Neal?
Thank you Chairman Morgan. So help me here again, if it was already at Public Works, okay? And then now we're putting it to the Parks. Isn't Public Works Department the one who, like, let's really, I really want to know where we're going here. Public Works is the one who decides where the signs, if the signs go up. Is that true? Or would the Parks be the one? So if we're just kicking it back to the Parks, when it just came from Public Works, Public Works put it in suspense file, we need to remake the motion and keep it in suspense file and wait when it comes back up at a later date because it's just going to go back there anyway? Reactor, am I?
So Commissioner O'Neal, let me regroup here a little bit. So we have two communications by Mr. Beal. They were referred to the committees and they moved them into the suspense file to be reviewed at a later date. Mr. Beal right now is asking that those communications be taken out of the suspense file prematurely and brought back up for discussion before this council. So the issue that we have before us tonight is if we want to bring those communications out of the suspense file and place them on the committee of the whole meeting at our next scheduled meeting? Or do we want to leave them in the suspense file until the timeframe is up as indicated by the committee and they, at that point, will be brought back from the suspense file to the appropriate committee that made the motion to place them in the suspense file? So that is what is before us tonight. Do we take it out of the suspense file prematurely or do we leave them in there until they are regularly scheduled to come out? Not where to send them, as County Attorney Joyce explained, so. Commissioner McDonough?
Thank you Chairman Morgan. My motion is just in regards to the, just for clarification, just in regards to the speed signs and not the other, I believe the other communication deals with storage container sales, if I'm not mistaken, so that would clearly not be something that should be brought forth to the Parks Committee. So I just wanted to clarify that. I guess that, you know, we should probably just take them out of the suspense file if that's what we're intending to do and then make a motion from there, but my intention for the motion was just in regards to the speed signs and as you stated there's two and not refer the storage container sales to the Parks and Rec.
So Commissioner McDonough, is that a substitute motion to just refer these communications back to the committee of the whole and then we will address them individually at the next committee of the whole meeting?
Yes, I'll make that motion. Second.
And that was seconded by Commissioner Fredrickson. So there's a substitute motion on the floor to bring these communications out of the suspense file and place in the committee of the whole for future meetings. Is there anything on the question? All right, seeing none, would everyone please vote? Would anyone like to change their vote? Can we please record the vote? Looks like 11 yes and one no. Thank you. Mr. Beal, I don't know if you can hear me right now, I think you can.
Yeah, just the speed sign.
Yeah, I just want to let you know right now that the communications have been moved from the suspense file and will appear on the next committee of the whole in an individual manner. And so in two weeks, we will be discussing those two individual communications independently.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, thank you very much, so we will.
Chairman Morgan, just one point of clarification. So should we not place this communication on file as well since we've done what we asked, what they asked?
Being that we've already voted, let's get them back on the committee of the whole and we'll address that at the next, at the next meeting.
Thanks.
Moving on to number two, communication 2020-164. Mark Niri, Public Works Director, requesting Council of Commissioners for time on the May 6, 2020 regular meeting agenda to open bids for the I-15 Crossing Jack and border for the Big Hole Transmission Line for the Water Utility Division. We did hold this bid opening, so Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you Mr. Chairman, I move to place communication 2020-164 on file.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded. Is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Would anyone like to change their vote? To record the vote, it looks like it is 12 yea, zero nay, motion passes. Next communication is number three, communication 2020-165. Mark Niri, Public Works Director, requesting Council of Commissioners for time on the May 6, 2020 regular meeting agenda to open bids for the chip ceiling roads for the 2020 season. We did hold this bid opening, so Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you Mr. Chairman, I move to place communication 2020-165 on file.
Second.
Okay, there is a motion seconded by Commissioner McDonough. Would everyone please vote? Is there anything on the question? Everyone please vote. Okay, to record the vote, it looks like it is 12 yea, zero nay, motion passes. Next, number four, communication 2020-166. Mark Niri, Public Works Director, requesting Council of Commissioners for time on the May 6 regular meeting agenda to open bids for the asphalt mix supply for the 2020 season. Commissioner Shaw, we did hold this bid opening as well.
Thank you Mr. Chairman, I move to place communication 2020-166 on file.
Second.
Thank you, there is a motion and second from Commissioner McDonough. Is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Would anyone like to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote? 12 yea, zero nay, motion passes. Number five, communication 19578. Gary Rundle, citizen requesting Council of Commissioners consideration to purchase property located at 1820 Banks Avenue, Butte, Montana. I wish to redeem the property from Butte Silver Bow before the tax sale in February. This is currently being worked on and is in the Judiciary Committee waiting for a public hearing to move forward, so we'll continue to hold this in abeyance. Next communication, 19582. Ed Bandarob Greeley Neighborhood Community Development Corporation requesting Council of Commissioners to invite the Montana DPHHS toxicologist to give a presentation relative to the hazard risks to human health of heavy metal contaminants present in the Butte Silver Bow community. We will continue to hold this communication in abeyance. Number seven, communication 2020-04. Mike Townsend, citizen requesting Council of Commissioners to consider the repurchase of my home located at 105 West Porferry. I will comply with all rules and regulations of the county enrichment program. We will also continue to hold this in abeyance. Number eight, communication 2020-125. Danette Gleason, Finance and Budget Director, requesting Council of Commissioners for time on the April 8, 2020 committee of the whole meeting for opening proposals for a private placement direct bank loan. This loan in the amount of $1,850,000 is needed to cover costs associated with Phase 1 of the Public Safety Communication System Modernization Project. We did hold this, so Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you Mr. Chairman, I would move to place communication 2020-125 on file.
Second.
Okay, there is a motion made and seconded by Commissioner McDonough. Is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Would anyone like to change their vote? Looks like we have 12 yea, zero nay, motion passes. Number nine, communication 2020-128. Mark Niri, Public Works Director, requesting Council of Commissioners for time on the Council of Commissioners April 1, 2020 council meeting, regular meeting to open bids for the asphalt supply for the 2020 season. We did hold this bid opening, so Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you Mr. Chairman, I move to place communication 2020-128 on file.
Second.
Okay, there is a motion made and seconded by Commissioner McDonough. Is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Would anyone like to change their vote? Looks like it is 12 yea, zero nay, motion passes. Number 10, communication 2020-129. Mark Niri, Public Works Director, requesting Council of Commissioners to hold a bid opening on April 15, 2020 related to Cell 4 Expansion Project for the landfill. We did hold the bid opening on that as well. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you Mr. Chairman, I move to place communication 2020-129 on file.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded by Commissioner McDonough. Is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Okay. Would the clerk please record the vote? 12 yea, zero nay, motion passes. Number 11, communication 2020-130. Mark Niri, Public Works Director, requesting Council of Commissioners to hold a public hearing to be held on April 1, 2020 regular meeting for the sole source of solar bees for the Basin Creek Reservoir. We hope to purchase the solar bees in fiscal years 2020 and 2021. We did hold that as well, so Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you Mr. Chairman, I move to place communication 2020-130 on file.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded. Is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Please note that motion was seconded by Commissioner McDonough. Would the clerk please record the vote? 12 yea, zero nay, motion passes. Next communication, number 12, communication 2020-132. Jim Fisher, Commissioner District 6, requesting Council of Commissioners to consider drafting a resolution that would amend the Butte Silver Bow Charter pursuant to the attached certificate number two to eliminate the 12 elected Council of Commissioners and the elected chief executive positions. Those positions will be replaced with a legislative commission consisting of five city county representatives elected at large by the electors of Butte Silver Bow County, Montana. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you Chairman Morgan. I did hear the opposition tonight and I took it in stride, but I do think there is some confusion out there on this communication in the public. And just point to clarification, a lot of people don't realize the communication is just asking that this be put to a vote of the public. Another thing is, is a lot of people don't realize that the five commissioners will not be full-time and they will not be paid any more money. The other thing is, is should this pass through the council or by a petition, none of these changes would take place until 2023 or 2024 because that's the way it's set up. So with the approval of you, I would take any questions, but I would like to put this in the suspense file for about 45 to 60 days, maybe 60 days if that were.
Thank you Mr. or Commissioner Fisher, is that in the form of a motion?
I would make a motion that I would like to put this in the suspense file for 60 days.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second. Yes.
Seconded by Commissioner Sorich? Is that correct? Okay, so we do have a motion to hold this in the suspense file for 60 days. Is there anything on the question? Commissioner Fredrickson?
Thank you Chairman Morgan. I guess my question would be for Commissioner Fisher on why he would like to put it in the suspense file. I don't, I, yeah, if you could just explain to us what your thinking is on that?
Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you Chairman Morgan, thank you Commissioner Fredrickson. My thoughts are with the COVID coming on, our plan was when we put this out there, which is right before the March 18th, was to have a, if this went through the commission, we would not have to gather signatures as a petition. Now with the election not being held at the Civic Center, which would have been a petition gathering area for the, you know, for the passage of this, I would just rather this be put in suspense file so we can get a little better education amongst the public, get a little more people used to what's going on and then get the election over with, maybe get a little COVID-19 behind us and let people decide. The thing about it is, you don't have before against this, it's just putting it to a vote of the public, that's all we want to do. Let the people decide. And that's the reason I thought, is get the election behind us, get a little bit of COVID behind us, get the public a better educated. That way, if we do have to go out and get signatures on a petition, it'll be a little easier to do than going on COVID when everyone has to wear a mask and, you know, not being goofs over 50 or something like that, so that was my answer.
Commissioner Fisher, I just have one follow-up question with that. As far as moving forward, did you and your group look at the possibility of making a request to this council to just reauthorize the study commission to be on the ballot just to make sure that, you know, not saying anything about your proposal, but maybe there's a better one or a worse one, but at least the study commission would be able to flush some of that out? Would that be a possibility for you to consider?
Thank you Chairman Morgan. The way we read it and the people who are assisting us, the study commission for charter is to meet every 10 years. So when we went and reviewed this, it would have to be on a 10-year. So when we went and reviewed this, it would have to be on a ten-year plan. So we thought if we done it the way we're doing it now, if we could get this on the November ballot, and it did happen to get on the November ballot, whether it be through the council or petition, nothing would take place until the election of twenty twenty-two. And then the positions wouldn't be filled until twenty twenty-three and it would be nearly twenty twenty-four before anything would happen. And I would just like a better opportunity to explain this and, you know, disclose some of the things we've done because it's kind of a complex thing and we did put a lot of work into it. And I would just like to have the opportunity to speak to the commissioners and have the people speak to the commissioners that helped us with this. And by holding it in the suspense file for sixty days, I think that will clear up some of the miscommunications. Because even tonight when we heard a lot of people saying that the five commissioners are going to be full-time, they're going to be paid and they're thinking we're voting on it tonight. As you can see, there's a lot of miscommunication. I'd just like the opportunity to hold this as we could. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Shea.
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. Sorry, had to find the unmute button. There's no miscommunication, there's no misinformation out there, there's no misunderstandings. A process already exists to make changes to the charter, which could be required to change our form of government. The voters get the opportunity to choose if they want to make a decision. There's the first vote of the people that Commissioner Fisher talks about. If the people decide to form a study commission, they have the opportunity to choose who they want to serve them on that study commission. That is another vote of the people. Those people will study and ultimately make recommendations that, guess what? They're voted on again. There is a third vote of the people when a study commission is involved. For him carrying this proposal to say that the voters should decide this issue is ignoring the fact that the voters have already decided this issue. I just outlined three separate ways it was voted on by the people. In two thousand fourteen, a resounding no was told by the voters to the community that they did not want to assemble a study commission and open up the charter for changes. The voters will have another opportunity to weigh in on whether they want to form a study commission in a few more years, which in electorate years is a blink of an eye. And that will occur in twenty twenty-four. Once that is assembled, there's a two-year review process. This isn't a snap decision and it isn't, well, we're going to do it in twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four. We're going to study it, we're going to look at it. And they're going to come back with some solid recommendations. Dan Clark said a transition can take six to ten years. It's not like you vote on it, you snap your fingers and suddenly you have a new form of government. It's expensive and it's messy. A transition is going to cost the taxpayers a substantial amount of money. It would be completely disruptive to our local government's ability to conduct the public's business. We are on the cusp of the largest super fund cleanup in the country and trying to navigate a complex conversion simultaneously will not serve this city well. It would be irresponsible in this moment to push forward with something as intricate and complicated as our cleanup potentially on the horizon. This issue should be approached with intention and thoughtful introspection, not through an end run around the existing process in an effort to undermine the will of the people who already spoke. The citizens also do not deserve to have their representation diluted. Citizens are currently represented by citizen soldiers who are their neighbors and their friends. Commissioners live and work right alongside the people that they represent. They don't want their representation diluted by taking away some of their commissioners and concentrating power in the legislative branch. Almost done. Government is inherently inefficient and to spend money in effort to prove that statement true, even under a different form, would be an incredible waste of taxpayer money. One thing all forms of government require for proper functioning is public participation. I have not seen any of Mr. Fisher's groups at any council meetings in the last seventeen months except for when they are advocating for this particular issue. That makes me question motives. And I do suppose it is true that people only advocate for what they have a personal stake in, so right now I wonder what that is. This recommendation serves no useful purpose in this point in time. After careful thought and deliberation, I would like to make a substitute motion to note and place this communication on file.
Second.
Okay, there's been a substitute motion made and seconded by Commissioner Olson to note Communication twenty twenty dash one three two. Is there anything on the question?
Chairman Morgan.
Commissioner Fisher.
Yeah. Thank you, Chairman Morgan. One of the reasons I wanted to put it in the suspense file is to get the consent decree behind us because I think that's one of the very important issues with this. And once we get the consent decree behind us, that would be a major thing. The other thing is, the study commission doesn't only act on this particular issue. The study commission works on a variety of things. All we want to do in this is amend a portion of the charter. And it's mostly due to section two and three in the charter. And the study commission in two thousand fourteen, they voted it down. It wasn't this same type of thing. And to think that this is something that Michelle's talking about, it has nothing to do. What is wrong with what is wrong with letting the people vote? Let the public vote, that's all we're asking. As commissioners, isn't that what we're supposed to do is let the public have a participation? Let the public vote on this. If they vote it down, we're all good with it. If they want it, we will proceed and we've got a procedure to do it. And as far as Dan Clark, he assisted us in doing this. We have five attorneys, three retired and two active attorneys help us write this. And if anyone has any questions, we're willing to visit and participate about it. We've not had the opportunity to explain this through any means except for these virtual meetings we're having. I have no problem if this gets voted down. I'm just thinking it's a good idea to send it to the public. And I'm sorry, Ms. Shea, that we got to disagree on this, but there is a lot more to this than just the study commission. And that was six years ago. The study commission doesn't need to get voted on again until two thousand ten. Thank you.
On the question, Commissioner Shea. Oh, Commissioner Shea, you have to unmute your microphone. Go ahead.
Oh, I thought I was, sorry. Commissioner Fisher, Chairman Morgan, thank you. With all due respect, Commissioner Fisher, if you think that the consent decree is going to be behind us in forty-five days, I think you're mistaken. We do not need to be undergoing a transition of our government in the middle of a large cleanup, which is going to take years to build, plan, and implement.
Anything else on the question? Commissioner Olson.
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. I guess one of the problems that I have with the proposal that's put before us right now, there's, I'll say, a lot of fleshing out that the five lawyers didn't put together that need to have those boxes checked. For instance, how much people are going to get paid, the things that most people and why at large and whatever. I think at this point, if you really want to propose something, is put it together and flesh it out so that there isn't any miscommunication. In this case, I believe the document as presented is missing a lot of things that need to be fleshed out and that's where the miscommunication comes from. So maybe that would be a way to approach it too. If we put this one on file, you'll have another several months to work on a new proposal and bring that back. Thank you.
Okay, on the question, look like Commissioner Sorich and then Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. This question is for Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Fisher, you said you wanted to educate the people in the next forty-five days. How would you educate the people? You know, what are you going to do? Are you going to kind of put a plan together or how are you going to go about that?
Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. Thank you, Commissioner Sorich. We plan on doing the same type of thing like they did in the consent decree. We plan on having meetings, letting people read and go through this. And as far as what they're being paid, there is no change in pay and they're not full-time commissioners. The thing is, the pay plan is the same, the stipend is the same. So to answer your question, Mr. Sorich, and I appreciate your question, is we plan on having these meetings, but to muddy the waters and have this amending the charter at the same time the consent decree was going on was foolish. So this is why we held off on it and then we had the COVID come in. I'm just asking to put this in the suspense file for sixty days. We'll come out and then we'll have meetings and we'll convince people, or we won't convince them, that this is a good plan. We have not had an opportunity yet to do any of that. And the thing about it is, all we're asking is to let the voters decide. What is wrong with letting the voters decide? You know, there's no harm in that that I can see. Thank you, Philiny.
Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you very much, Chairman Morgan. I would agree, I don't think there's anything. When I listen to the letters and when I've talked to Commissioner Fisher about this, there's been a big what the letters have said and what Commissioner Fisher have said don't mesh very well. That means that a lot of the group who wrote these letters, and I got quite a few calls and emails and a few text messages from people about it. Also, you don't seem to like this for whatever reason. They have some problems with it. And I think that's one reason why we should put this in the suspense file and give him a chance to educate the people so they can get some of these questions ironed out. And I think it would alleviate quite a few of the problems. They were complaining about full-time commissioners. This doesn't call for full-time commissioners. That's something that some people like to see, some people won't like to see. But they're adding and putting words into this document's mouth that aren't necessarily there. And I think it's only right and makes the most amount of sense to, instead of rewriting this proposal to make sure every single question is answered and called for. We've never done that before. If we have questions, we can ask. And that's something that Commissioner Fisher and his group can put forth hopefully in this next couple of months. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Commissioner O'Neil, Commissioner Olson, and then Commissioner Shea. Commissioner O'Neil.
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. You know, as this thing has been rolled out, you know, and not being critical to you, Jim, and your guys' group, but you know, as far as getting the signatures that you guys needed to get this thing put on for the people, you know, I'm not sure where you guys were at with that. I felt like that if everybody in town was so passionate about making the changes in this government, you guys would have had all the signatures. As far as confusion to the people, I want to say confusion to this commission, we don't even know. We're supposed to know what the proposal may or may not be, whether it's five commissioners, whether they're full-time paid or whatever. The twelve of us on this call don't even know. I mean, if we don't know, how are the people going to know? So why, in my eyes, why would we push this for the people to vote when they don't even know we're voting? So what that means is, the proposal does need to be changed. And not being critical to you, Mr. Anderson, but this is something that is very critical. It's changing the government, it's changing a lot of stuff. It's just not flipping a coin and somebody drafted up a letter and a thing that we don't, nobody understands. It's all confusing. This, and a whole new, in my eyes, proposal. This needs to be shot down and something else needs to come forward for the public, for us, everyone. Like, it needs to be proposed way better. This was proposed way before COVID nineteen, way before all this stuff. So to me, these are all excuses. This plan was so awesome, so great. The town of Butte would be knocking on the doors, you guys would have thirty thousand signatures and that would be it. So we focus a lot on this, in my opinion. There's a lot more energy that needs to be put elsewhere to make our town great. And that's why I just think that we need to do a good job of the government we have and the team we have now and not worry about in ten years that it's going to change. That's my opinion. I'm done talking.
Commissioner Olson.
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. Exactly my point. When we're going to vote on this and put it to the vote of the people, I think the questions that people are asking, like in the letters today, those are the areas that need to be filled in. It needs to be specified that they are part-time with the same stipend they get now. Answer those questions in a new proposal and then you don't have to do as much education and it's very clear to everyone what the actual proposal is. I wouldn't vote on this myself right now because there's a lot of gray areas and the lawyers need to go back to the books and say, we need to fill in these blanks. And having been in on negotiations with a bunch of lawyers, they can argue for hours on this and come up with different proposals. They need to fill in the blanks because when this is all said and done, the public needs to know exactly what the proposal says and not, well, is it full-time or not full-time? Is it, you know, why are they at large? Answer those questions in a new proposal. I think that's the way to go. Thank you.
Commissioner Shea.
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. Back to Commissioner Anderson's point, you know, we get a lot of text messages and phone calls. The phone calls and text messages and emails and the communications that I got were not, they had nothing to do with the commissioners and what the commissioners were making and how many of them were. It was that the commissioners were at large, which is really, really a ridiculous proposal. The biggest thing that people were concerned with is that city manager and that having a city manager was going, a city manager reporting to a different council of five would concentrate power in the legislative branch. It would take the voters' voices away from holding that city manager, the person making decisions on their behalf. That person would not be elected. So therefore, they could not be unelected. They could not be voted on or voted against. And that was the most egregious thing that was in the proposal that people are dead against.
Commissioner Sorich.
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. You know, I'm not sure it's all a bad idea to reevaluate what our government looks like. You know, if there's going to be any changes, I'm just not sure the timing is right at this point. You know, there's so many things in the air. Like, you know, everybody's talking about, you know, we're going to be doing the, hopefully getting the consent decree finalized. You know, we're in the middle of one of the biggest, largest pandemics in history. You know, we don't know what our government's going to look like when we come back, you know, when we get back full-time. If, you know, what kind of changes are going to be needed? What kind of, maybe more people are there? What kind of costs is going to be involved? You know, we don't know what kind of costs is going to be involved with changing this. I just don't think at this point in time is a good time to do it.
Commissioner Anderson. You're on mute.
Thank you very much, Chairman Morgan. Just to go over my point again and just to put it in something else that's been really big on our agenda the last little bit, there's plenty of questions that people do not understand on the consent decree. Should we send that back opposed to Mr. Olson and have them cross every eye and dot every T and make sure that everybody understands it a hundred percent? That's the whole point of the education rooms we've had before and I hope and I believe that's what the whole point of Mr. Commissioner Fisher's motion is tonight, is to give him and his group the time that the consent decree people took in educating the people so hopefully the twelve of us can come together with a good idea of what is best for our community. Whether that is up or down, we should have the opportunity to flesh this one out as much as possible. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. I just want to, on the, one of the drop, and real point I want to just make that I haven't brought up to you guys. You know, if you go from twelve to five commissioners paying the same money, okay? We all know how much time we have as commissioners, the family, work, and how much time, how much takes, we are part-time. So how in God's name that's going to make it any better on cutting it down to the five, okay? With the same pay, I'm still not sure on that, how that's going to work. The other thing I wanted to mention on this, if, every time I hear all the growth of the other communities, I still want to see the, and somebody proved to me that cutting, getting this magical city manager, okay? It's going to be at least, get anybody decent, it's going to be a hundred and fifty grand a year, okay? In Butte Silver Bow, nobody, as we know, salary is like that, it's a big deal, okay? Now, again, you're going to drop it down to five commissioners to make this, everything's going to be more magical and we're going to grow like Bow's
and we're going to grow like Bozeman and Helen and everything else. I just, if we could honestly look in the mirror and say that the reason, the reason why Butte, Montana is not growing is because of the size of the commission and how the government runs, I beg to differ. That's, there's other forms of reasons why Butte, Montana is not growing. It has to, so now you want to give it half with half pay? I mean, you're going to have five commissioners doing way more work, covering way more area. When it's hard for 12 commissioners, part-time to do the, to do, to get everything done, you know what I mean? But thank you for listening to that, I just wanted to prove that point on there too. That's, that needs to be noted, that's a real thing.
Commissioner Fisher, I can't see you, so I don't know if you have a comment or not.
Yes, I would Mr. Chairman, if it's my turn, I'd like to speak again.
You bet.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. If you guys remember, if council members, if you'd remember, I handed out the certificates one and two in the letter to you on like March, right after St. Patrick's Day, right before St. Patrick's Day. That is when did we shut down the government, right after that. We haven't had no meetings since I handed out this pamphlet. You know, all I'm asking is give me a little time, and if we vote this down, that's fine. The process and procedure goes like this. And we never went out and searched for any signatures, so we were thinking that, we never had an opportunity. We never asked for any signatures. The process is, we ask the council to approve it. If they approve it, we don't have to go get signatures. If the council does not approve it, we will go get the 3,500 signatures and put it on the ballot. It's just so much easier to have the council approve this, let the voters make their choice. If they don't approve it, we're going to go out and get the 3,500 signatures anyhow. And it's going to go on the November ballot. And if it don't go on this November, because of the COVID, we're supposed to have men. If it don't go on this November ballot, it will go on the next one. You know, the 3,500 signatures is probably going to happen. But, you know, it's so much easier for us as commissioners to let the people have their say. What is wrong with letting the people have their say? I agree with all your points. And if anyone read through these, they would see the difference. All we're changing is Section 2, Section 3. That's all we're changing in the whole charter. We don't need a study commission to do that. So I appreciate all the input and I'm sorry that I'm not getting through to everyone. And I have no hard feelings if we vote this down. But I would just appreciate if you'd give me the opportunity to put this in the suspense file for 60 days and then you want to vote it down after 60 days, that would be fine. But right now, you're voting it down without giving me an opportunity to present my case. And I'm sorry about that, and I thank you for your input.
Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. I'm going to date myself, I was in the 2004, the 2006 study commission. I was brand-new, I hadn't even become a commissioner yet, I just started as my first elected position. And I can guarantee you that we spent two years reviewing that charter. That's the only way that I know of that you can change the charter without some pretty, you know, serious other actions such as getting petitions signed. I think that the people have spoken, I go back to what Michelle Shea, Commissioner Shea said, is, it took two years, we talked about this, and morally and worthy, we're both on that study commission with me along with five or six others. And we agonized over, we agonized over everything, but we went through everything with a fine tooth comb. The charter can only be, at the time, you know, we looked at the charter to see if there's anything we wanted to change. So here we are, fast-forwarding it to now, and I just feel like the people have spoken. And not to say there isn't a Plan B, the Plan B could be to go out and get petitions. But I, I think that that's the way to get people to say yes or no, whether or not they want to do something. That's the other option that a person or a group can take to get something on the ballot. But personally, I was very surprised that in 2014, that the community did not ask for a study commission to come back because every 10 years, things change a lot. And I feel on the fence a little bit about whether I'd like a city manager. But I'm always all about the law and how we run our community. And the people rule, and we represent the people. They don't, you know, we don't represent ourselves, we represent the people. And I really feel like if the group, God love them, wants to go forward and get their petition signed, fine. But I really have a hard time going around the study commission, that's my opinion. That's the only way that I know of that we are supposed to be reviewing our charter. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to note Communication 2020-132. Is there anything else on the question? Okay, would everyone please vote?
Chairman Morgan, could you just repeat the, would you mind repeating the motion?
Thank you Commissioner Shaw, the motion was to note Communication 2020-132 and place on file.
Thank you.
Would everyone please vote? When the clerk's ready to record the vote, please let me know. Looks like nine yay and three nay, so motion passes. Next item on tonight's agenda is public comment on any public matter not on tonight's agenda. At this time, we will wait a little bit and go to the phone lines. Looks like we have one call. Thank you for calling the Butte Silver Bow Council Commissioners Meeting. This is the meeting, so please state your name and address for the record. Hello?
Hello?
Hello. Welcome to the Council of Commissioners Meeting, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Lindsay Alts, 1401 Gilman Avenue.
Welcome. Go ahead.
Lindsay Alts, 1401 Gilman Avenue.
Yes Lindsay, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm kind of fading behind on the catching up. Well, I know that you guys just kind of discussed the matter of 2020-132, which I was going to call in earlier. But someone submitted my post written earlier, so I just kind of wanted to throw my two cents in here. I heard Jim, Commissioner Jim Fisher's responses, and it's kind of disturbing when there's five lawyers backing him, helping him write a proposal and it's not clear. There should be no miscommunication in that in the first place. And it wasn't just before the shutdown. It was an article published, you know, in the Montana Standard, you know, in September of 2019. So I'm just kind of confused on why he's so adamant on getting this pushed through when the people have spoken by voting for and electing 12 commissioners already. So it's clearly saying we want 12 commissioners, not five. We want a chief executive, not one that's a city manager hired and fired by a five-commission, you know, panel. So I just kind of wanted to put my two cents in saying this is not good for Butte. It is definitely not, you know, the fault of the commissioners that our economic, you know, situation isn't booming right now. And I think this whole proposal is just kind of taking power and representation away from the citizens of Butte and putting it in the hands of a select few. And when that doesn't go their way, they can change that figurehead called the city manager. So I just kind of wanted to put that out there.
Okay, thank you very much.
Oh, and also I wanted to give some props to the IT people. I know this whole situation, calling in, submitting stuff and not having the public there. It is a lot of pressure and it's kind of crazy right now, but the IT is doing a good job, so.
Thank you very much, I agree with you on that.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other calls? We'll just give it another few seconds. Okay, it doesn't look like we have any other phone calls. Let me get re-situated. I do have some communications to read into the record tonight. Everybody, you guys can hear me. The first communication that I have is from Evan Barrett, 807 West Silver Street. "Thank you for your indulgence in considering these supplemental comments to what you've heard from me earlier this evening. These comments are needed clarification." He did send this on May 6th, just so the record reflects that. "During my earlier presentation, I emphasized my preference for an outside, out-of-the-CD memorandum of understanding to move the ball forward on the Silver Bow Creek restoration. I mentioned an MOU put together by Butte Silver Bow, the State of Montana, and Project Green. Excuse me, that configuration of an MOU is what I want to clarify. When I did that videotape, I thought Project Green's involvement is signatory to the MOU as a surrogate for Restore Our Creek Coalition, which is an unincorporated arm of Project Green, was a good idea. Subsequent to the filming, I have come to the conclusion that the MOU ought to be negotiated item between the State of Montana and Butte Silver Bow. Without Project Green on the signature line, let me repeat, without Project Green on the signature line. That being said, Restore Our Creek Coalition could be more than happy to play a role in the development of the CD and also plan for its implementation. We think that is consistent with the role ROCC has played on behalf of thousands in the community over the last five years. But let me reiterate how important and outside the CD MOU is to ensuring that the council can achieve its dual goal of signing the consent decree and advancing the restoration of Silver Bow Creek. This MOU would result in committed action by the state and Butte Silver Bow in restoring the creek while still adhering to the CD itself. It is in a way we can help achieve both. And let me suggest again that we expedite, expeditiously, expedi- oh my God. Expeditiously pursue a vehicle. And for further clarification, I make no suggestion that the MOU be attached to the CD, thus involving the EPA and ARCO. I would represent the commitment of the MOU parties, Butte and state, to act together outside of the CD to keep the possibility of a creek moving forward for Butte's future while maintaining consistency with the CD and without holding up the signing of the CD. Thank you for allowing me to make this clarification. I stand by every word of my videotaped comment with the exception of the reference to the Project Green as part of the MOU." And that again was from Evan Barrett. Should have brought some water tonight. The next communication is from Ryan Lynch, PO Box 934 in Butte. "Chairman Morgan and Commissioners, I am writing to express my support for the Butte site, or consent decree CD. After taking some time to review the CD documents, I urge you to authorize the chief executive to sign it on behalf of our community. It didn't take writing this letter, or I didn't take writing this letter lightly and decided to weigh in after informing myself on the pros and cons of the CD. Growing up in Butte, Superfund Cleanup has been a constant. I remember my father, Jack, who served as a chief executive in the 1990s, talking about Superfund and the impact that it had on decisions across the country as well as the community. There were conversations about BSB becoming a PRP and ultimately what Butte would look like when the final decisions on cleanup were made. I have been fortunate to follow in my dad's footsteps into public service and serve this community as a local legislator as well as a member of the Butte Natural Resources Council. From this vantage point, I have been able to stay current on the ongoing discussions on cleanup and restoration in our community. When it comes to the CD, to a large extent, I defer to the technical experts and staff that have worked tirelessly for our community in crafting the CD and technical documents that will guide the path forward for Butte. They have done a good job of explaining what is contained as well as listening to and addressing the concerns on what is not contained within the agreement. I think the parties of the CD have used science to formulate the best approach of getting the cleanup done right and have included important provisions to monitor progress and make sure the cleanup is sustained in the long term. I think the CD protects BSB taxpayers so we don't have to pay for the cleanup. While this does not contain everything everyone wants, all things considered, I believe the CD deserves our support. It is time for the council to authorize the chief executive to sign off on this and be part of the solution and move to the next phase of cleanup in our community. Thank you for your service and our community, and thank you for allowing me to weigh in. Thank you Representative Ryan Lynch." The next communication is from Ken Neighbor, 102 Larkspur Lane. "To the Butte Silver Bow Council Commissioners, the CD has been negotiated behind closed doors for three decades, so take your time, don't let anyone pressure you to make a quick decision. I support the idea of attaching an MOU to the consent decree CD due to the following statements made by Superfund Cleanup representatives at the recent public meetings. Number one, the straight segment of upper Silver Bow Creek could be modified to have curves like a natural meandering stream. Number two, it is known where the groundwater contamination that's flowing towards Silver Bow Creek is coming from. Due to these statements, the two options of building a fake Silver Bow Creek elsewhere or turning the existing stream into a meandering stream along the same line of its present location, both with stream linings are dependent on the contaminated groundwater. Whether the groundwater will continue to be contaminated once the surrounding soil is removed can better determined once the contaminated soil is removed and the groundwater gets retested in the future. Knowledge gained then should be used to determine how to proceed with Silver Bow Creek. Considering the blue bones that have been observed in surface water puddles on the contaminated soil, it is highly likely that the contaminated soil is a large contributor to contaminated water. Presently, there are two runs of perforated pipe installed under Silver Bow Creek to capture the contaminated water. Council must recommend that the suggested MOU be added to the CD and include that these factors be considered before a decision is made regarding what to do with Silver Bow Creek. The guarantee of the future public meetings must be documented. It seems likely that the perforated pipe to catch contaminated water in the lining may not be necessary once the surrounding contaminated soil is removed. The requested restored meandering Silver Bow Creek could possibly exist with minimal groundwater contamination. This could save lots of money for the cleanup parties and not stick ROCC with the task of raising more money to build a fake stream. Silver Bow Creek could become less contaminated once the surrounding contaminated soil is removed. Let's see what the future water tests show once the surrounding contaminated soil is removed. Then let's decide on how to proceed with a free-flowing stream. If groundwater improves, a free-flowing meandering Silver Bow Creek along its present alignment may be possible." And that one was from Ken Neighbor. The next communication is from Melissa Wannamaker-Ni-Missy Pazanti. "You have the opportunity to make history, take it or seed it to your grandchildren. I worked more than half my career in the Alaska oil industry and have seen this game played out. Oil industry works on a 30-year horizon, far more than most politicians. I am fairly new to Butte and don't know if my voice counts yet. I have tried to stay quiet because it's pretty lame to be an armchair quarterback. I am one of the 3,000-plus people who signed the petition to save our creek because I am in general pro-creek, pro-elder, and pro-activist. After learning the details, I have concerns." Number one, when the heck, I changed that word, will the water come from? If we have 10 million-plus gallons of aquatic safety standard water available to flush down the toilet every day, 10, 20, 50 years from now, my grandchildren and great-grandchildren will benefit far more to either keeping it or selling it to desperate drought-stricken folks in Utah, Colorado, and California. I am not opposed to manufacturing a creek to make happy memories for 30 people, but would rather spend a little more to create a closed recycled water feature that didn't waste this valuable resource. I do not believe the Butte CD needs to wait, or to await this happening. ARCO died decades ago, BP is in serious trouble with golf liabilities. I don't believe Butte will get a better deal. Delay concerns me, let's start moving dirt." The next communication is from Colin Higgins. "I would like to offer my insights into this complex agreement between Butte Silver Bow Government, Atlantic Richfield, State of Montana, and the US EPA. Proving this consent decree is..." Proving this consent decree is vital to Butte's future. As a community member, husband, father, and business owner in Butte Silver Bow, I feel it is my civic duty to offer my support of the consent decree. There has been so many moving parts to this agreement over the thirteen years that I have been a Butte resident, that it took a bit of conf, confusing, and it has, and it could look a little bit confusing, and it has. But through the steady leadership and communication of Butte Silver Bow and the partnership with BP Atlantic Richfield, I feel confidently that we can finally put this decades-long battle to finally clean up the heart of Butte behind us. What does an agreement to the consent decree do, in my opinion? Moves the community of Butte forward after decades of stalling and utilize the unprecedented amount of capital and engineering to finally clean up this very negative piece of Butte's history and, in turn, it into a positive cog in Butte's future. I firmly believe that the leadership of Mr. Sessow has been instrumental in orchestrating and pushing forward this grand design to help clean up a broad, a broad swath of Butte's most visible and vital green space. It is my recommendation to further the support of the leadership group in conjunction with the engineering prowess of BP Atlantic Richfield behind it. Josh and the BP AR crew have been very transparent, responsive, and progressive throughout the public involvement. This in no doubt, um, be a monumental step in efforts to finally clean up Silver Bow Creek, but also the future cleanup of Blacktail Creek and the Upper Clark Fork. Professionally, in my opinion, passing this consent decree would be tremendous boom, boon to the Butte economic future and allow us as citizens to guide and grow this massive project with the engineers involved. Personally, I feel that this is the, the so, this is so vital to every citizen in our amazing community, and that of my two children and everyone's children and grandchildren's future, they call Butte Silver Bow and the surrounding area home. We owe it to ourselves to see this endeavor home, but most importantly, to those that call it their community and home long, and home long after we're gone. Again, Colin Higgins." The next, uh, communication is from Scott Franklin. "Greetings, Butte Silver Bow Commissioners and Chief Executive Palmer. Just a quick note here to urge you to approve the Butte Priority Operable Unit Consent Decree. It is in the best thing for the Butteans and the, and Planet Earth." The next one is from Red Mountain Hydrogeologic, um, Joe Griffin. "I am compelled to write a third comment to this council concerning the consent decree to address a seeming contradiction between the legal and scientific basis of the enormous Superfund Agreement that is before you. Silver Bow, um, County Attorney's Office recently requested and received a legal analysis of former Judge Newman's ruling in the case Silver Bow Creek Headwaters Coalition LLC versus the State of Montana from Ryan McLean, who is with the firm of Franz and Driscoll P L L P, Attorneys A Law. I quote the following from the analysis. Regardless of Silver Bow Creek Headwaters' decision, the DEQ has the sole statutory enforcement powers of Montana's environmental laws, including the Water Quality Act. The Montana Supreme Court has recently affirmed the DEQ's broad authority in this realm and the court's great defer, defer, deference to the DEQ decisions when they wrote. The legislator, legislature has authorized DEQ to administer the Montana Water Quality Act, and the judiciary may not substitute its judgment for what an agency carrying out a statutory duty assigned to it. And to ensure that the agency decision-making is scientifically driven and well reasoned, this court affords great deference to agency decisions implicating substantial agency expertise. I'm not using McLean's legal analysis to extend the discussion of former Judge Newman's opinion of this ruling, but to illustrate the point that the law follows science and not the other way around. I emphasize here that the Montana Supreme Court affords great deference to DEQ's scientific expertise, and now focus my comments back to the matter at hand, the consent decree. It is an agreement deeply stepped in years of science and law. As with the Montana Supreme Court, this council should defer to thirty-seven years of science and technology that underline this consent decree. When I think back to the faces I have seen at the table in the countless technical discussion and countless negotiations, I see many Montana tech graduates. I see University of Montana, MSU, and Carroll College graduates. Most who get into the Clark Fork Watershed Cleanup stick around because they know we are leading the world in environmental cleanup, and this is once-in-a-lifetime career opportunity. The team that produced the consent decree includes scientists and lawyers that have been working towards this agreement since the nineteen nineties. You could say it was a team of rivals composed of individuals from EPA, Atlantic Richfield, DEQ, NRD, and of course, Butte Silver Bow, and an army of their consultants. Discussions were often heated and egg, egg antagonistic, but in the end, the team found sent, or consensus that protects human health and the environment. We have had the best and the brightest behind this final plan to clean up Butte and Silver Bow Creek. I urge your vote to approve the consent decree at the May twentieth council meeting. Sincerely and with utmost respect for this council, Joe Griffin." And that concludes all of the communication that we received to the public, dash input at bsb.mt.gov. So, at this time, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner McDonough. So all those in favor, or anything on the question? All those in favor? All, all those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Have a good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Night, John Boy.
Good night.